...of 2017, if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this meeting is being brought to you by Area 58 Community Access Media.
Okay. Give me two seconds just while you need to read that into the record.
Do you want to...
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to enact remote participation for Jim Hoffman where he's away on business. And he couldn't be here tonight. He participated in the beginning of this hearing and it's essential for his input.
So you have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, huh?
So you have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This is to advise the public that the Planning Board member, Jim Hoffman, will be remotely participating in this meeting. It has been confirmed that it would be unreasonably difficult for him to physically be here in person. Now we're gonna...
See if Will's got it down.
Leave him in contact, Jim.
Hello?
Hello, Jim.
How you doing?
Good, and yourself?
Not too bad. Glad to hear your message now.
All right.
No problem, Jim. You're on speaker. We've started the hearing.
Okay. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Jim. All right. So we're here tonight for the continuation for definitive subdivision, DPH Realty Trust, Zero South Meadow Road, Patriot Pines. So, oh, Sarah. We did go for a walk and I thank Sarah for meeting with us on Sunday. And Will and I were there and...
Jim Hoffman was there.
And Jim Hoffman was there with us. And we did walk through the woods with Sarah and looked over any areas that we had concerns about. So I don't know if you would like to say anything, Sarah?
Well, first of all, just thank you to the board for meeting with us this evening. For the record, Sarah Sterns, Beals &amp; Thomas, and I'm here with Ed Angley, the attorney for the applicant, as well as Ken Conti from Beals &amp; Thomas and Sean Daggett from Top Tier Realty. We thank you for attending a site visit. We also, I also walked the site the following day with Stephen Cole, a town planner, and went over the project components similarly to how we did on our site visit. And we're here to respond to any further questions or comments. Happy to present the project briefly if the board would recommend. Otherwise, we can just discuss anything, any remaining concerns or questions.
Mr. Chair, will you maybe just have Sarah go through a brief presentation of the plan for, you know, any new citizens in the audience and people at home? I think will be helpful.
Okay. Yeah, please.
Happy to. Okay. As you know, we are proposing a 19-lot conventional subdivision to be made up of eventually 19 single-family homes. As part of this project, we are creating a subdivision roadway to be known as Fairway Lane with utility, subsurface utilities, electric communications. Each lot will have its own private potable well and septic system for which we have done test pits with the health agent that have been observed, a stormwater management system for the proposed roadway. Also, we've performed a number of test pits in coordination with the health agent and peer review engineer. And we, as we have discussed, the project is subject to the inclusionary zoning provisions of the bylaw, so we would be compliant with that among other segments of the Carver zoning bylaw, as well as the subdivision rules and regulations. We had discussed the plan preliminarily with the board back in September and have undergone two technical review sessions and responded to our peer review engineer comments and have adequately addressed their comments in the final plan set. We have filed with Conservation Commission and received our order of conditions for work within their jurisdiction. And we have conducted our site visits with both the Concom and Planning Board. So that's really where we are today, and that's a very brief overview of the project.
Thank you. Anything, the Planning Board members?
Mr. Chair, if I could, during our, thank you very much for meeting us on Sunday. I really appreciate it. There was a couple of things that we went through during our site visit. One was the retention, retention area. They proposed where it was going to be laid in conjunction with the residents from Wade Street. I know that we had talked about some type of buffering, natural buffering and stuff like that. Want to talk a little bit about that for us?
Sure. I probably just need to get up to the plan. This probably shows at best the area that Mr. Sinclair is talking about. Just to orient everybody, the bogs on Wade Street are here in four adjacent properties to the end of the cul-de-sac on Wade Street, all abut the same property line. And the area that we talked about adding some natural plantings is right on the western and southern borders of the sediment, of the drainage basin. This whole area will be cleared. This whole area will be cleared and graded to make space for the basin, but we'd like to add some native vegetation to this area just to help buffer that, that open area, will become an open area. We have added a planting zone, if you will, on this, this final plan as well, just so it's memorialized on the plan.
Good. I know that we talked quite a bit about that when we're out on the site, and I'm glad that you incorporated that in the plan because I, you know, the way that you look at it and the way that it's staked out there. Just so that way the residents know that there will be the clearing there and we've put in, in place for some type of buffering that will grow back and buffer that.
Right. The idea is to take en masse, if you will, some of the low-growing vegetation, the shrub layer and the saplings that are native to the site and move them over to this area. It's not going to be just sort of stand of trees planted, but some... Yeah, to just sort of get scooped up.
Front end load them, just move the whole.
Right. So we think that would be, I mean, that has the best chance of survival. It's onsite, we know it's native to the site, and we think that will, will work well.
Wonderful. The other thing that we had talked about is the emergency access road, the gate. We know that you, you've met with the fire department. They were happy with everything that you guys have proposed. Comments and stuff in the gate will be a Carver lot gate, correct?
Correct.
The only access in there would be in the case of emergency. There'd be no other vehicle traffic in there, similar to what's happening now.
Correct. It will be very similarly used to how it is now. We hope that it's never needed as an emergency access, but it's there if for some reason the South Meadow access road is blocked and there's an emergency on the cul-de-sac, the emergency services can get in using this. I also brought some photographs of some gates that we've been talking with, AD Makepeace, about providing to this project if the board would like to see them as an option that would fit nicely with the residential neighborhood, just so it's not as industrial-looking as it could be, but just wanted to put forth an option.
That's great. Absolutely. And the other thing that we talked about, and I just want to go through our lineums that we talked about. On the emergency access road where it meets Fairview Lane, there was a discussion at our last meeting on the turn-in radius, the stone apron that was going to be there. And we had asked for something that was more aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood and stuff like that and, other than just a big stone apron.
Right. That's absolutely a possibility. I think it benefits the proposed residential area if it's more aesthetically pleasing and the applicant, you know, agrees with that. What we'd like to propose is that we maintain what we have on the plan and just say an all-weather surface will be coordinated with Carver Fire Department. So the developer will coordinate that to make sure that whatever is chosen as the final material for this area, since it is right in the neighborhood, will be coordinated with Carver Fire before it's ordered or installed.
Interestingly enough, I spoke with the applicant earlier today, and he agrees with you. He doesn't think it's very as pleasing as it stands, and he wants to do something about it. We don't know what, but we'll come up with something that all the parties can agree on.
Excellent. Thank you. Those are my points.
He did say it, too.
I think we did have one other thing we discussed, and that was with Lot 6, which is just left of the basin. And we were discussing, and I don't know if it's on the plans or not, about taking the 30-foot rear buffer zone and making that a, also a limit of... For, limit for cutting so that there wouldn't be any disturbance between the property line and the 30 feet?
It's, the rear lot line, rear lot setback is actually 50 feet. So I'm a little bit hesitant to put a number on it. That's a pretty large area.
Yes, yeah.
We did speak with the applicant about that, and he assured us that every effort is going to be made to maintain a vegetated buffer to the existing residential properties. It's in everyone's best interest to enjoy privacy on, on both sides of, of this, and he's in complete agreement with that.
We might employ the same theory of taking en masse chunks because they're going to have to clear the road and place it on the, on the border, and it'll grow in.
I think that's all the things we discussed. Jim, did you, well, first we'll go with, Jim, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't. One of the other comments, I'm not sure, I didn't hear every, I couldn't hear everything, that the access road, there'll be no further construction, so the homeowners will know about that. The, the emergency access road, because I know we talked about that, that was a question brought up by some of the neighbors.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
Construction on that, if, it's at, you know, the existing road. So it's not as if we're going to be disturbing that, that area. So I thought the public should know about that as well.
Okay. That's a good point. Yeah, we had discussed about the access road that goes left of the cranberry bog, that you were just going to do a little bit of, mainly it was going to stay as it is, and maybe there'd be a little tree pruning so that trucks could get through, like overhead tree pruning. And then you'd be doing a little bit of grading at the entrance?
Correct.
And then we were going to place, you were going to place the gate like in the area that's rear of the bog?
Correct. The access road has been discussed at length, the emergency access road has been discussed at length with the Carver Fire Department, and they went out and visited the site and drove the existing bog road, which will become also the emergency access road, and agreed that until we get past the existing bogs, very little improvements need to be made to the road. They're fine with it as is. And that is in sensitivity to their needs certainly, but also the fact that there's an abutting residence directly next to it and a cranberry bog on the other side of it. So it's very constrained, but it, it's good enough to serve their purposes until we get just past the bog where the grade starts to shift up, and there we need to do some more significant earthwork to get that road in keeping with what emergency services would need. And that's about where the gate would be placed as well, so that the existing cranberry bogs could continue to be cultivated without having to go in and out of a gate every time. And so this existing road would be used for the cranberry bog cultivation, very similar to as it is, how it's used today, and then a gate would be placed somewhere in this vicinity so that no further passage toward the subdivision could be had.
And then we also discussed, just so that everybody knows, that that road, access road, wouldn't be used in the construction of the subdivision. There'd be no vehicles going through there.
Correct.
No. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that for the public, that's all. And thank you, Jim, for bringing that up. Anything else that, any other questions or concerns you may have, Jim?
No, I think that was it.
Okay. Thank you. Kevin's all set. Sam, did you have anything that...
No, I think you've touched on every one of the ones we brought up.
All right, Will, this is a public hearing and it's continued from the last meeting, so if anybody out there has any questions or concerns, you could, if you could please come up and speak into the microphone. Talk to me, we'll have questions answered by the people here.
Can I go back to the first page?
Sure.
All right. So I'm Brian Abatello, 15 Wade Street. I sit, my, my line is abutting the property that we're talking about, might even be straddling Lot 6, I think. So I have two questions. One is, was there ever an alternative for where that drainage ditch is going to be now? I mean, the low, I'm just going to go over to it.
Yes.
This whole section of this area is low land. So why, why is it going to be here? Why can't it be down here? You've got Zero Wade Street sitting right here, you've got six acres of unused property that's never going to be used according to the town. Why is this here and not down here somewhere? And why can't the town say, hey, pull back up, a little bit of the land from Zero Wade Street and accommodate this strange ditch that's going to cause problems for us in the future? A huge mosquito nest that's going to basically give us nothing but trouble? You know, and if it, you know, if anything ever happens, you know, we're, we're sitting right on it. So, you know, has there ever been an alternative? I mean, you can give up this much land to foot this year for this lot, why couldn't you do it here? Or why couldn't the town accommodate these people with a little bit of property from a blighted site that is never going to be used by the town or never going to be sold? It's there as a blighted site and supposedly it's non-buildable and all this has been going on for years about that piece of property. I don't, I don't see why that couldn't go there and get back the road and whatever. But my concern and the concern of others on the street is this pond that you built. So that's one question. Second question is, when you've got a 60,000 square foot lot, what's the strip of land 50 feet from our property line? What's the, what's the problem with just allowing a number of 50 feet or 35 feet or 40 feet? I don't get it. I'm lost.
You can ask the question.
You've got a 60,000 square foot lot, 50 feet, that's all we're looking for. There you go.
Okay, thank you. We'll see if we can get those questions answered for you.
Shall I? I'll try. To...
We did, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we did discuss this when we went out and we took a look at the site.
Right, right.
And we did, we did discuss all this.
I heard we can't put a number on it. That means anywhere from zero to 50 from our fence line.
So we'll let Sarah speak and...
Can you guys feel free to jump in, but to respond to your first question about the basin, we looked at all different placements of it in the preliminary design. The idea with placement of the basin, and Sam also chime in as, as you see fit, is to try to maintain the natural drainage pattern of the site. The majority of this site drains in this direction, toward the lower area over toward Wade Street. The other complicating factor with the placement of the basin, which is significantly sized due to the size of the road, a lot of water needs to be addressed based on the regulations, was the incorporation of the emergency access road, which was a requirement. So we've incorporated the emergency access road at a point on this, on the proposed road where it was required by emergency services and combined that with the drainage parcel. If the parcel, if the drainage parcel was over on a different part of the site, this would still create an unusable lot where the emergency access would need to come into the subdivision. So this, the combination of those two items was a necessary step. And we've, we really tried to move it all around the site initially, and that's why we go through the preliminary design phase, trying out all different ideas for it. And this is really, drainage-wise, makes the most sense for this piece of land. It will also be dry. You will very rarely see water in it, given our very well-drained soils in Carver. It is set up to take significant water from a major storm event and will filter very quickly. For all of us that live here, we know that we have sandy, very well-drained soils, so it will be dry, it will be grassed, there, there will only be riprap in a couple of areas just to prevent scour, but it will be green. So, and it's a very shallow slope on the side, so it'll be a very gradual depression. So I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Sam or Ken, if that...
I mean, I can, can't really, I guess I don't necessarily want to speak to whether or not there are other possibilities, but certainly that location was, based on the soil testing they did, the depth of the test, the depth of groundwater, the separation, the soil conditions, the infiltration rates and the size of the basin, I guess I would concur that that location is, from a drainage standpoint, is a suitable location. Now whether or not, you know, the screening, I think, is the primary issue. There's going to be clearing on that lot, there's going to be clearing for the houses, for the roads, for the driveways, for the yards, for the septic and wells. You know, the specific location of all those improvements need to be worked out. This stands out, I think, a little bit more now because this is one of the initial infrastructure elements that gets put in. You know, I think I would generally agree that you can see fast-draining soils there. You're not going to see a lot of standing waters in terms of mosquitoes, but it certainly is a detention facility and...
I'm afraid I'm going to say that.
I'm not sure that I've really asked the question, just trying to, you know, provide information, make sure that the applicant is clear on what's being proposed and what we saw when we were here.
So when you're talking about low, I'm looking at it from where I live, and I walk that property all the time. And, you know, behind my house and this house, gradually the land goes away from us. So what you're talking about, you say that you've got a low depression or whatever, you're talking about from an aquifer standpoint, that the water drains away from that point. So that's basically like a tipping point in the, in the drainage of, of that particular piece of property? Is that what you're trying to tell me?
Well, just that in that, in that location, there is a depression, and in that specific, in the test pits that were done in that specific area, the groundwater was significantly deeper than in other portions of the property. And based on the naturally occurring drainage patterns, the amount of the property that naturally goes to that portion of the site and the soil conditions that are present in that location, that is a suitable place to, to install a detention basin. Now whether or not there were other, is not really something that we necessarily reviewed, but, but in regards to the specific concerns you had about a detention facility in that location, I, you know, we're confident through what we saw and the calculations that were provided, that the installation that they proposed would function according to the regulations.
Thank you.
So Ed would probably respond to part two of your question.
What was the question?
The clearing.
Oh, clearing. Why 50 feet, 25 feet?
Yeah, why 50 feet? Why not? You know, whatever.
Well, I think the Planning Board has expressed the fact that they want to be sensitive to the neighbors, but they also want to, don't want to constrain the developer to doing a good job on it. You'd have to know when you get out there to cite the house, where is it going to get cited? How much clearing has to be done or not be done? And I know you cleared to your property line, so, you know...
No, we got, we got about 30 feet of trees back there in my property line, my fences.
We'll undoubtedly leave some trees there, two of these. You don't go out and cut trees just for the fun of cutting trees.
I think also back here...
I know that. I, I understand that. Don't, don't...
If you could, if, if, I don't want to, excuse me for a second, just, if you could just talk to us, the board members, and then we'll get it addressed. But I think what they, but I think what they had talked about before when we started this is that they were going to leave, they, they thought it was desirable for them to leave a buffer between your property and their property, too. You know, we walked that and we did see that on the Kavikis and, and in your area, you can see the tree line on the, on the plan, that there, that you do have a buffer that's, that's on your property. But I, and, but I think what they're trying to say is, is that it would be desirable for them to also have a buffer for Lot 6, too.
That's what I'm asking.
Right.
Exactly what I'm asking. There should be a buffer skirting that whole, that whole line of property. That's what I'm asking. You've got 60,000 square foot lots, and I don't see where it's a big lift to leave some trees on the property line, so that way, not for me and my school and my neighbors not to ruin this pool. And we've got people going, how you doing? That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
I don't need to be patronized, either. You know, be fair.
Well, if...
If I ask a question, you should have been paying attention. Then don't patronize me when I'm talking.
Mr. Chairman, just to reiterate what we discussed with the applicant, he does agree it's in everyone's best interest to maintain some privacy. There's every intent to maintain a vegetated buffer between the existing residents and the proposed residents, residences. And in this Lot 6 in particular, I just want to point out to the board, this lot naturally drops in elevation before it adjoins your property. There is a low area here, which is likely going to lend itself to not clearing this back part piece anyway. It's a nice, natural way to maintain a buffer. I don't know the exact dimensions of that, but I don't think there's any, I know there's not any intent to clear to anyone's property line. It doesn't help you and it doesn't help the, your future neighbor to be on top of each other. So that's really not the intent, and, and, you know, they want to do this the right way, and we have been assured that, and we have been asked to convey that to the board and to the public.
Does that satisfactorily answer your question?
Sure. Yeah, satisfactory. Totally satisfactory.
No, really?
Yes. I didn't get, I didn't get, you know, a footage, the question also I had, you know, you're not going to put a number on it, but, you know, I guess I'll have to take it on faith that, you know, there's going to be a buffer there.
Well, we did discuss, I don't know what the other board members think. I know we did discuss it in the field. At the time, we thought it was a 30-foot, and you're saying it was, it's actually a 50-foot.
Yes. When I got back to the office and I could see the fine print on the plan, it is a 50-foot rear lot building setback. So the building would be at least 50 feet, the home would be, at least be built at least 50 feet from the property line. And likely significantly more based on looking at that particular lot and the way that the grades are, the, the natural grades, and to utilize sort of the front part of the site closest to the subdivision roadway, and then to, you know, be able to install a well and a septic system and, and give the home a yard, there would still be plenty of vegetated area in the rear part of the lot. Again, it really drops off, so... Again, it really drops off, so to leave those trees in that particular area that we're discussing seems to make the most sense, just to use it and keep it as natural as possible.
Do you have anything, Ken?
Anybody else?
Anybody else have any other comments? You know, I do see that the contours on your, your lot are 135, and like, the bottom of the basin is 124, so it's, you know, the bottom of the basin is much lower than your backyard, anyway, by 11 feet. And then, and then that part of, about half of your backyard will be planted along the edge of the basin with the pine trees, you know, the natural vegetation, anyway. So that'll take some of the curse out of that. And then it's just that the other half of the lot, that there is a high spot, and then it does go down, so it does seem like that would not be touched. Anybody else have any other comments?
Mr. Chair, seeing that there's no comments from the public, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
So we have a motion and a second? Those in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Jim?
Aye.
And Jim, too. All right.
Mr. Chairman, it pleases the board, before the members, is a draft decision that's been prepared by the staff to consider for this evening. The board and staff did visit the site, as you and the applicant noted. Comments were captured during that process and presented in the conditions contained therein. At the last meeting, I read in some comments that were received by the planning staff from other town departments. Since that time, we have not yet received any additional comments. And with that said, there are 13 conditions for the board to consider this evening.
All right, let me read the conditions. The first condition is, prior to the planning board's endorsement of the final plans, a true photocopy of the planning board's decision as registered at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds shall be submitted to the Carver Planning Department. Two, prior to the planning board's endorsement of final plans, a protective covenant shall be executed and recorded at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds and shall be submitted to the Carver Planning Department. Three, prior to the release of any lot by the planning board, all easements, deed restrictions and conveyances, if any, as submitted to the planning board, shall be executed and recorded at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds and shall be submitted to the Carver Planning Board Department. As soon as, Carver Planning Department, as soon as, four, as soon as practically possible, the applicant will provide the planning board with a statement estimating the cost to construct the new residential road and associated drainage. Estimated costs will determine the value of covenants consistent with Town of Carver subdivision rules and regulations and zoning bylaws. Five, always, all ways, roads, drainage facilities, water facilities, and other utilities within the subdivision shall remain private and any maintained thereof. Snow plowing and other associated costs shall be the responsibility of the applicant or its successor in interest with respect to same until said time when the Town of Carver has accepted all responsibilities of said roadway and associated easements. Six, a copy of any change in ownership of said property and responsibility of said subdivision shall be filed within the town clerk within 30 days of recording of said instrument. Seven, during construction, all local, state, and federal laws shall be followed. Eight, there shall be no burying of stumps anywhere on the approved subdivision property. Nine, following endorsement of said plan by the planning board, the applicant shall supply a duplicate MyLAW of the sheets to be recorded, and seven copies of the signed plans. Ten, the emergency access road easement from Wade Street to the subdivision will be locked and used only by the Town of Carver emergency vehicles if needed. Eleven, best efforts shall be made by applicant and successive owners to maintain a buffer between adjacent properties and the subdivision along Wade Street to the retention pond. Twelve, the point at which the emergency access road joins the new residential road shall comply with the fire department regulations and all-weather surface that is aesthetically consistent with the characteristic of the rest of the subdivision. Thirteen, the applicant and successive owner shall ensure the intent of inclusionary zoning provisions is upheld pursuant to Section 3000 Inclusionary Zoning found in the Town of Carver zoning bylaw. Particular care shall be exercised to ensure compliance with Sections 3040 Design Construction, 3045 Habitable Space Requirements, and 3087 Segmentation. Waivers, no waivers were requested. This decision shall not take effect until a copy of this decision certified by the town clerk. That 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed with the town clerk without any appeal having been filed therefrom, or that any such appeal has been finally determined has been filed at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds and a certified copy indicating such registry recording has been filed with the Carver Planning Board. Any person wishing to appeal this decision of the Carver Planning Board in accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81BB, must do so within 20 days of the filing of this, of this decision with the town clerk.
I've pretty much covered a lot of everything that we had talked.
I think so, yes.
I'm okay with that. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Patriot Pine subdivision with the conditions that were stated in the document that we had.
So we have a motion approved, we have a second?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
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 And Jim, also. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Uh, Jim, we have a question? Jim, are you still with us?
Yeah, I'm still there, yep.
Okay. When, you want to ask?
We'll do it afterwards.
Oh, we'll do it afterwards, okay. We'll give you a call after the meeting, in a few minutes, is that okay?
Sure, that's no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
We just have a question for you.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, that's, that's it for that. What paper, what do we have to, we have...
Mr. Chairman, I have here a signature sheet for you and the rest of the board.
Sir?
That'd be fine, that'd be great.
I didn't want to forget it. Sarah, do you need these back, or can we keep them for?
No, you can do them.
Thank you.
MyLaws, that should be in your email as well. What's that? It should be in your email as well.
We could sign the MyLaws here tonight, right? Generally, if you need, huh? Oh, we need Jim to sign. Oh, if you could, could you...
If you wanted to leave them with me, I could coordinate that with Jim after the rest of the board signs. Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, they're awesome.
Okay.
They're excellent.
Planning director notes. One of the board members' notes. All right, we'll go on to planning board member notes. Does anybody, any of the members of the planning board have anything that they'd like to say?
Thank you, sir.
I don't have anything at this time, Mr. Chair.
Neither do I. Okay, we'll go to planning director notes.
Mr. Chairman, you have in your packets the minute meetings from our last meeting on November 28th. Not contained in your packet, however, due to an update or an improvement to the, to the minutes on the 14th. We will take up that matter on our next meeting, if that's okay, on the 12th. I understand there had to be a slight amendment to the, to the, to the minutes. So if you will review the 28th minutes, and if you find them agreeable...
Yeah, I did see those.
Just one thing I had, and maybe I'm just not seeing it, on the public hearing, the document that was read into, in the motion to enact the remote participation, and the document that was read in should be added to the beginning of the public hearing. So that language there, and also, I had made a motion to enact the public hearing. I don't remember who had seconded, I think, I think you seconded. At a previous meeting to enact public...
It's at the very top of the minutes.
It is?
Yeah, because that's when you would write it. No?
It goes into the scope, unless I'm missing it.
Very start of the minutes, on the first page.
Oh, you say attendees, and then remote participatory...
Thank you.
Public hearing only.
Well, good. The only thing is that...
Oh, the announcement that I read, this is to revise the public planning board members...
You got it. Mr. McElroy, thank you.
Is, you have what you need?
Yep.
Do you need a modify?
It's at the beginning, so it's, it's perfect.
Okay. So you made a motion to accept them based on, or we knew that was...
Yep.
And I'll, and I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so our next meeting will be...
Mr. Chairman, the 12th of December will be our next time together.
December 12th?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's our regular scheduled meeting, right?
It'll be a regular scheduled meeting.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Seven forty-four.
Good night.